Now, we're gonna jump all the way down to six. And that's the fiscal year 2021 approved budget from Budget Committee. There are a few things on there that the Administrator checked or denoted. And from what I understand, want to know if what she included in that met everybody's approval. So Counsel, I'm assuming that you all saw those areas that she delineated. So with that in mind, does anybody have anything that they would like to say concerning that?
Do we open the public hearing?
Well, that is a public hearing. Yes, you're right. Thank you. We are going to open up the public hearing at 6:30. And if there is any public on the phone, this is your chance to speak concerning this subject.
And if you have, I do, I will check my email during the meeting, just in case people email us. But hopefully, most of the people join us by video and then they can just chat. So if somebody has anything, if you have anything you'd like to say, you can chat in the window and I will let Mr. Mayor know. Or you can also try to email me. This is for the audience members, if there's any out there.
All right, thank you. Needless to say, we don't have anybody in the room with us. And I don't know if we're gonna get any emails or live calls. So I am gonna go ahead, I'm gonna make a little bit of an exception here. I'm gonna go ahead and close the open hearing meeting at 6:31. But if we do have anybody that comes up or on, then I can temporarily reopen it. I don't think that there's anything in the rules or regulations that preclude that. So, does everybody, does that sound good to everybody?
Perfect.
Okay, good, yeah. Because this is really difficult to do it this way. And somebody might have something to say and not be able to get in right away with it. Counsel Kaufman.
The Administrator, friends, I was just wondering, were we supposed to do a public hearing for the revenue sharing?
We did last month.
Yeah.
Yep, because I had to get that to them before this, this, I had to have it by the 31st.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I didn't see any errors. It looked like all the changes that we suggested were made.
Didn't, okay, can you say that, ask the other Counselors a little bit louder?
I reviewed it. I didn't see any changes that were not made that we made. Did anybody else see anything, maybe that I missed?
Okay, does everybody else concur with Counsel Kaufman? All right, I'm not hearing anything, so I guess everybody is.
Okay, there's no, the folks online have not chatted anything.
Okay.
I didn't really, I mean, nobody comes to our budget meetings generally, anyway.
All right, so we're gonna be doing the resolutions on the 2021 budget here a little bit later. But now we have, at this time, we're gonna dissolve basically as a council and then go into the Urban Renewal Agency at this time. So Counsel Kaufman, take that away if you would, please.
We need a couple minor changes to the Urban Renewal. I guess I need to technically open the meeting. Open the meeting has the Urban Renewal Agency.
It is an open, it is a public hearing.
And we have everybody present?
And I believe the Urban Renewal starts, the report starts on page 36 and then the packet is on page 37.
Great, so open a public hearing for the Urban Renewal Budget. Appears that we have to do that. Does anybody have anything on the Urban Renewal Budget?
Any changes on the Urban Renewal Budget?
Nope.
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 Any public comment? Then we'll close the public hearings for the Urban Renewal Budget. And if there are any changes, can I ask somebody to make a motion? There's a suggested motion on page 36.
Somebody want to take a stab at a motion, page 36?
They're scrolling. Let's go to the front.
Is that 2021-01?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I make the motion to Urban Agency adopt Resolution GBURA R.2021-01, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, making appropriations to clearing tax increment and collecting the maximum amount of division of tax.
Is there a second? Counselor Campbell, seconded? As she dropped her phone.
I'll take it in.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the question, starting with Mr. Pagano. Counselor Pagano.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. What, that's already an item, right? So I will close the Urban Renewal EPC and give it back to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. We're going now to ordinance and resolutions. It's Resolution R.2021-06 FY1920, supplemental budget. Do we do that every year? Anybody want to make a motion?
If anyone has any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Do you mind just going over the basics?
Yep, okay, so the supplemental budget is for the year that just ended. And there's two line items that, two areas that I asked for the supplemental budget. One had to do with emergency management services, which we obviously spent a lot more money in that line item because of COVID. We are getting some of that money back from the state, which is good. We so far have gotten back $19,000. And I just put in a request for another $42,000 that we should hear back this week. And the state decides whether they will pay for certain reimbursables or not. And then the other one was the loan, the inter-fund loan that we made between the sewer reserve and urban renewal to loan the money to the whites for their housing project down by the port. That was not in last year's budget. So those were the two items.
Thank you.
Which will remind me really quick, has anybody been down there to look at that?
Yes, let them really get.
It is. They're doing a fine job, a fine job. They're moving right along. Any, anything further, Counsel? Can we have a motion, please?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution R.2021-06, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 and transferring appropriations.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Pagano. Mm-hmm. Discussion. Question.
Okay, I'm gonna poll everybody since we're not in the room. So, starting with Counselor Pagano.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, then we have Resolution R.2021-07 FY fiscal year 2021, budget. And we've already gone over the budget, so I don't think we need to spend much time on that. Anybody want to make a motion accepting the budget?
I'll make a motion to approve, adopt Resolution R.2021-07, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2021 budget, making appropriations, opposing, and categorizing the city tax.
Thank you, ma'am. Second to that, please?
Second.
And Counsel Brennan?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, motion's been made. It has been seconded. Discussion. Question.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Miscellaneous items, we've got discussed future agenda items.
Okay, I just wanted to give everyone, you know, because this has been such a weird spring and now we're into summer because of the whole virus thing, that I haven't put some, like, kind of weightier topics on the agenda just because we were thinking that there was gonna be an end to this. But it's looking now like we're gonna be living with this for some time. So I just have some things that I'll be bringing on the agenda next month that are a little more weightier than we've been dealing with, just because. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. So typically at our July meeting, we look at the water rates for the next fiscal year. And then also, we look at the city fee schedule, which is our, like, our other fees for things about every third year. And it's about that time. So, and then there were updates this year by the legislature to the public contracting laws. And we, we have this process that we go through with our attorney where we adopt our own version of the public contracting laws. They prepared all that for us, but I have to do a notice to get published in order for us to have that meeting. So it's more, it's a big giant document, but it's more basically just adopting what the attorney gives us. So, and then the food cart thing we were, we're gonna be talking about. One thing that I was hoping that maybe you guys could kind of kick around this evening is now that we're gonna be living with this for a while, we do have some folks, it's not a lot, there's about 20 of them, that have not made payments on their utility bills at all. And we had talked about earlier in this year about that they're, I think they're hoping that it's just gonna go away, but we had talked about it before that we were just gonna be deferring. We are gonna be, we have not had the late fees on the water bills since April. I think it's probably time now, because it's gonna be here for a while, that we should put the late fees back on for August and have them on. We're not shutting people off just because it's a health issue, but I think that we need to have incentivized starting to pay the bills. And I will say that these are not, these are frequent flyers. It's not like people that don't normally, that normally pay their bill. These are people that consistently don't pay their bill and I think they're taking this as kind of a vacation. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there and let you know that we are gonna be putting the late fees back on for, for August.
So the ones that are, the 20 or so that you have, they're ones that typically have a difficult time paying the bill?
Yeah. Yeah, and Kim, our utility person, she sent a very nicely worded letter to those individuals this month and just said, you know, hey, you need to contact me so we can get you on some kind of payment plan, you know, so that we can, you know, try to, because, you know, it costs money to produce the water and, you know, and it's not really fair to have other people subsidize their water. We're not gonna cut them off, but it's not a vacation from their water bill either.
What sort of hammer will we have?
Well, I mean, we-
We're not gonna cut them off because of the health issue.
Right. Well, the hammer is that it's not gonna go away. That, I think they think that if it gets high enough that the council's just gonna say, okay, we forgive it. But it's like, no, that's not gonna happen.
Okay, so the hammer then in essence would be, you will end up paying your entire bill when this is over?
Yeah.
Or you will be disconnected.
Yeah, once it's over, yeah. So Kim contacted them about, you know, getting folks on some kind of payment plan, at least making some payment monthly, to try to get them caught up. And she's really good about working with people, too.
Yeah, yeah.
She was just a little frustrated because there hasn't been communication with some folks. And that's, again, not unusual, that these are people that don't really want to talk about it.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with that personally. Counsel, what do you have to say about it?
I agree.
And Counselor Pagano, you had chatted. Yes, the food truck is gonna be on the agenda for next month. We're gonna have a draft, a draft code amendment for you guys to look at. And there's Lorraine.
Oops. Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. So does that sound okay, Counselor Pagano?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Yep.
Counsel Kaufman, hand it over.
I don't think we finished the vacation rental ordinance.
No, and I had that on there that-
I think it's at the attorney. If I remember right, that was the last place we-
Yeah, because I put down here outstanding, there was the vacation rental, short-term rental, and the enforcement, qualified enforcement thing. So probably not all of those in September, but those are just things that are hanging out there that I wanted to let you know that we're gonna be talking about, because we haven't done a lot of that in the, you know, since this whole thing started. But we're gonna have to start talking about more things in the meetings now.
Counsel Brennan has it.
Who does?
Counsel Brennan, did you have a question?
Oh, it's, don't with the vacation rental thing, but I think you answered it.
Okay.
Anything further?
Not on that, so that's just a heads up. And I will try to get information to you, especially on the media topics, a little bit sooner, so that you have time to look them over. Not necessarily as part of the agenda packet, but just if I get the draft from the attorney, try to forward it to you so you have a little more time to look at it.
All right, thank you. All right, if that's it on further agenda items, then we're gonna move to the 2020 election reminder.
Yep, just the final reminder, this is, the last day to file is August 25th.
26th?
25th.
25th.
And if you're gonna file by signature, I suggest you get that in a week earlier, because it takes a little while for the clerk's office to verify signatures. But if people plan to file by just paying the fee, you can do that all the way to the 25th.
All right, thank you. Administrator, do you have a report for us?
I just, the life is hazy right now and pretty much has been. I have the, I finally have the room tax reports updated through the end of this fiscal year, so through the end of June. And I printed those off, Counsel Kaufman is here tonight, so I gave her the copy. I will upload that report to the Google Drive for everyone so that you can access it. And June wasn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be, which is kind of good. July, I think, is actually gonna be better than a normal July because there's just way lots of people here. The website traffic is picking up, too. Update on City Hall, as long as the cases are going up and not going down, we have no plans to reopen. We, we're still conducting business online and over the phone, and that seems to be working well. And the visitor center, that, the remodel is still going along. We had hoped to have it done, not that we were gonna open, but there, a lot of the supplies are backordered, so that's not completely finished. As soon as it's done, I'll let you guys know and we can go down there onesie-twosies and I can show you the changes that, the structural changes that we made on the inside. But pretty much, we're just trying to keep up with the changing, I don't want to say regulations, but changing, you know, guidance and stuff that's coming out to make sure that we're protecting the employees here and then also, you know, just the general public, trying to keep everyone safe. So it's just, we're just living in really strange and weird times, so.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, pretty big week out here, I think.
It was, the service that went to Wilson's, I don't know exactly what happened. I don't, I think it was just that it was in one of the old original 1950s lines and it finally just failed. So the Public Works Department, they spent like two full, like, 12-hour days working on it because they couldn't, they had to bore under the road.
I know, that's why they did one side and the other.
Yeah, yeah, they, they weren't able to, like, if they could've just trenched it, but ODOT doesn't let us do that. So, but it was a gnarly, gnarly fix. But Will was just talking to me about it today. They've got it all buttoned up and they think that it's good to go now forever. But it was just an old connection.
Good, thank you. Anything further, Counsel? Counsel Madison, do you have anything that you'd like to say on Council member comments right now?
I do, thank you for asking. Last week, the County Board of Commissioners had a, an agenda item where the topic was the Highway 101 turnout camping and some of the, the traffic pickups that they've seen and that. I understand that, you know, we're probably seeing more traffic on the side of 101 because state parks have closed. I know that the county parks have seen a huge influx of traffic. But there were several agencies in attendance to that meeting, state police, state parks, sheriff's office, many jurisdictions that actually participate in moving folks along when they decide to camp overnight in those areas. And one of the solutions, it seems that state parks was proposing to the extent that they had security grant funding was to install about 10-foot tall signs, several at each turnout. That might not sound like a bad idea initially, but when you look at the impedement and the aesthetics and what it takes away from the views that we have with those turnouts, I'm really hoping that the council will support me in advocating for maybe working around just putting those 10-foot size masses of them at every turnout. They've done that historically and those signs have come down. And so one of the thoughts that a local citizen brought was, maybe we put those no camping signs on the informational sign showing what viewpoint or turnout it is, because they'll be looking for that anyway and maybe they'll draw more attention to the no camping sign right underneath it. It would also put it on a metal pole versus wood, which might secure the sign staying up a little longer. But I'm pretty concerned about how the view will be impeded and really ruined. We have the most beautiful coast. And to have these large, obnoxious signs in multitudes at each turnout, I think it's gonna pull from the natural beauty of this place. And I'm hoping that you all will consider supporting me in standing up or maybe looking at doing something different.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
Counsel- Sounds like Counsel Brennan has a question.
Counsel Brennan. Yes, Counsel Brennan?
I would definitely support Counsel Madison in that effort. They did that down at Pistol River. And it was, it was obnoxious. I mean, they put like two signs on every turnout at Pistol, at Myers Creek Beach. And it is disgusting. There's no reason for it. If you want to put a sign on the, on the parking, the barrier, the, so you don't drive over the edge of the cliff, that's fine. But not on an eight or 10-foot hole with this big giant no overnight camping or no overnight parking in one of the prettiest places on the planet. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Anyone else want to comment on that? Am I safe in assuming that the council is behind Counsel Madison on this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, fine.
I agree to you.
But Counsel Madison, it looks as if you've got council support. You have mine, too.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're a quick walker, ma'am, and thank you for what you're doing. All right, let's, one at a time, all right. Counsel Brennan?
No, I have nothing else, but I'm glad you brought it up.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Pagano?
I have nothing.
Counselor Campbell?
I just wanted to say that hopefully, by the time we have our next meeting, we will have a new roof on Dos Chus Suite at the Event Center.
Wow, great.
That would be super, yeah. It'd be nice if you can report on that, that'd be great. Anything further, ma'am?
No, sir.
Counsel Kaufman?
I just want to say that we had a dynamite Budget Committee meeting, excellent. Lady person members, Counselor Pagano really showed his financial stuff. And we had half the people here and half the people remotely, and it moved really well. Everybody was very participatory and I was impressed. So thanks, everybody, for their help.
Yeah, it went really well.
And we met some tough subjects and it was hard, but we got through it. And so I just really wanted to put a shout out to them.
Well, thank you, yeah, thank you, everybody, for that. I, unfortunately, and I might as well go into my comments now, unless you have anything further, ma'am. And as you all know, I had to miss that because I was at a hospital trip in Medford at the time, which brings me to my next point. I, this coming Friday, I have a surgery scheduled at, in Medford again, in Providence Hospital. So I'm gonna be gone all day that day. I'll have roughly about a week that I'm not gonna be able to do an awful lot due to circumstances that I'm not really fond of, but nevertheless, needs to be done. And then the following Friday, not this one, but the next one, I go back and I should be able to, at that time, continue on with life as normal. I don't have, as far as I can think of, that's the only thing that I really wanted to make you aware of so that you know what's going on with me. Uh, does any, yes, does anybody have something to say? Does anybody have anything that they would like to add to whatever they've mentioned? Give you another chance at this. All right, let's go ahead then, and, um, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting is Monday, September 7, 2020, is 6:30, and of course, we'll be right here. With that in mind, and I don't think we've got anything else going on, and I want to congratulate everybody for a speedy meeting, and, uh, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Um, real quickly, uh, just, if there's anyone, we have a few people in the audience, I think we have three folks, if there's anything that you want to ask or have questions or whatever, you know, last call. Okay, going once, going twice? All right.
All right, I, I put him, uh, requested a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
So move...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion been made by Counsel Brennan.
Second.
I will second.
Second, uh, second by Counsel Kaufman, and I'm not going to bother, once again, with, uh, any sort of deliberation question.
And I will poll everybody, just, everybody just say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, good night, everybody, thank you very much.